Good evening. I am calling the regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, May 6, 2021 to order. I apologize for the delay. We experienced some technological difficulty as we were trying to go live this evening. At this time, I would ask that our city clerk do roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Figueroa.
Councilmember Figueroa present.
Councilmember Keel.
Councilmember Keel present.
Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Wood present.
Councilmember McCluskey.
Councilmember McCluskey is here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming here.
Mayor Protem Worthington. Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Mayor, call for a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Worthington.
Mayor, Councilmember Keel, I move that we excuse Mayor Protem Worthington.
Okay, but first, do I have a second?
Councilmember Figueroa seconds the motion.
Thank you. Do I have any objection? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I would ask Councilmember Fleming to lead us in pledge of allegiance. Those of us in the chamber, can we please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
It's Councilmember Keel. I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
Councilmember Figueroa seconds.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections? Okay, not seeing any, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have some recognitions. I would like to ask Mr. Howard Lee to come forward. Mr. Lee, we are providing you with a proclamation and thanking you for your two years of service when you stepped in, when Councilmember Grassi was unable to fulfill his duties on the council. And I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last two years. You took the task at hand and really hit the ground running and had vital contributions to our council in the decision-making, and for that, I can't thank you enough. But for that, we have a proclamation here that I'd like to read. It says, "Whereas Howard Lee was appointed as Councilmember Protem for City Council Position Number Four on September 16, 2019, and then appointed as Councilmember on October 4, 2021. And whereas during his time on the City Council, Howard has served as Chair of the Finance Committee, served as a city representative to the Pierce County Regional Council and Pierce Transit Board, and served as a member of the council's Commission Interview Committee and 25th Anniversary Celebration Subcommittee. And whereas Howard understood and worked to foster an environment in which the community, business, and the city worked together to build a foundation for the long-term prosperity of University Place. And whereas Howard has demonstrated in practical ways his deep and genuine love for his community. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of University Place wishes to extend its sincere appreciation to Howard Lee for his service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities, proclaimed by the City Council of the City of University Place, Washington on December 6, 2021." So, we also have a plaque to add to your remembrances here of all the years that you have provided as a volunteer, but also as a council member. And this will teach you never to say yes to anything moving forward, and enjoy your retirement. But I honestly cannot thank you enough for stepping in when we had this need and for fulfilling Ken Grassi's position and making sure that his vision was also carried forward in that. So, thank you very much. You have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your kind words, certainly humbling, and I didn't recognize the person that you were talking about in that citation. When I took the assignment, I knew it was going to be daunting because I knew I could not fill Councilmember Grassi's shoes, but I did the best that an old guy could do and gave it my best. I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank each of the council members for accepting me and making the transition from private life to as a council member as easy as you possibly could. I learned a lot from each of you. I learned more than I contributed, but I want to thank you again, and thank you for letting me serve.
Thank you. Now smile with our masks on. I would like to ask the Grassi family to please come forward. This evening, we are also doing a proclamation to our former council member, Grassi, and it's an emotional time, and I'm hoping I can get through this. Kim and Melanie, I know what you're going through, and this is tough, but I got to say, when I met Ken 25 years ago, I have never, it's beyond words, he was the most generous and caring person that I have known, and he contributed so much to this community. And every day, I see what he left behind and what he worked with the original council members to create. And I hold him dearly in my heart and will always forever think of him and can't look at daffodils in the same light anymore. I think of Ken each and every time I see him. So tonight, this is a City of University proclamation. Whereas Kenneth J. Grassi was elected to the City of University Place City Council Position Four upon incorporation in 1995 and served as a council member, during his term as council member, the City Council developed the first 130 ordinances for University Place, began the construction of safe streets and sidewalks, initiated a contract with the Pierce County Sheriff for Police Services, and worked with countless individuals, groups, and government agencies to successfully lead the city into full cityhood. And whereas during Ken Grassi's term on the City Council, he served two terms each as mayor and mayor pro tem, and was driven by compelling desire to solve community needs and to address social, environmental, education, public safety, and economic issues, which have greatly improved our community. And whereas during Ken Grassi's time on the City Council, he understood and worked to foster an environment in which the community, business, city, and city worked together to build a foundation for the long-term prosperity of University Place. And whereas to promote such an environment, Ken served in a variety of governmental appointments, including but not limited to Puget Sound Regional Council, Pierce County Cities and Towns, Pierce County Mayors and Executive, Pierce County Regional Council, Pierce County Transit Board, and the Association of Washington Cities. And whereas Ken Grassi also volunteered his time to serve on numerous city committees, including the Finance Committee, Town Center Steering Committee, University Place Festival, UP Beautification Project Ad Hoc, Roady Garden Ad Hoc, and Homestead Park Ad Hoc. And whereas Ken Grassi's true passion was in beautification projects where he led efforts to literally plant thousands of daffodils and add hanging flowering baskets to University Place's streetscape. And whereas Ken Grassi was a pillar of our community, he was well-known and loved for his genial manner and commitment to not just talking about making UP a wonderful place to live, but for working hard and literally getting his hands dirty to make it happen. Whereas Ken Grassi's sense of humor, kindness, energy, and graciousness enriched those fortunate enough to know and work with him. And whereas, it is fitting that this City Council should pause to remember the bountiful life of this exceptional civic leader and wonderful human being. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of University Place recognizes the remarkable achievements of Ken Grassi and gratefully acknowledges his many contributions to the city, proclaimed by the City Council of the City of University Place, Washington on December 6, 2021." So I present them. And I also, we also have a plaque for you. And I got to say, your husband will forever be missed, but he will not be forgotten as long as we have the beautiful city we have and the wonderful family, so.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you.
On behalf of our family, we want to say thank you to the City of University Place and for this honor and for this time. And my father would be saying, no, no, no. But he embodied every one of those words, and I know each one of those words was carefully written and specific and unique to him, and so we thank you. He adored his city colleagues, the residents of this city, the city staff. He honored and loved each and every one of you. And he started the work here in this city, but I want to say that his work is not done in this city. And so it is our goal now as a family to take his baton and not do it as well as he could, by any means, but to guarantee that it's not done and that this city and the citizens of this city continue to have a beautiful city to live in, a walkable city, a city that they are proud of, a city that businesses can thrive in, and a city that is the jewel of Pierce County, as he always said. And we are honored to carry on his legacy for you now and for those to come and for future generations. And we want to say thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. We love each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do a picture, a big picture. Come, Mr. Wood. Thank you. And part of tonight, Ken Grassi was not the only council member that we lost this year. We lost two other founding members, Lorna Smith early in the year, and Gerald Garing this summer. And so with that, we have a special video presentation to remind us of what these three remarkable individuals, along with their colleagues on City Council, did for us. I want to thank staff and all the contributors to these quotes. It was a wonderful tribute to three public servants that were dedicated not only to their position as public servants, but dedicated to the well-being of our community and the future of our community. So, thank you very much. This video will be available on the city's website starting tomorrow for those that would like to watch it again or would like to forward it on to others. Okay, our final presentation this evening is from the UP schools on the local levy support. May I ask for Jeff Chamberlain to please come forward? I need to make sure your mic is on, and please have it as close to you as possible.
Okay, how am I doing? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. It's always an honor to address the council, and especially on a night like this when so many wonderful public servants are being recognized. So, an added honor. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jeff Chamberlain. I'm superintendent in University Place School District.
in the county collectively in mathematics, almost 20 points above the state average, which we're very proud of. On the next slide, same is true for literacy, the same year, essentially the same data, but again, for reading, and reading, writing, and literacy measures. Also, the highest achieving school district in our county, 16 points, or more than 16 points above the state. So, we're proud of that. Next slide. Because of that, we get lots of recognition for this achievement, for some of the other great things in the district. I will not go through all these. It's in your packet. But we're very proud of the awards that, in this case, our secondary schools receive it. On the next slide, lots of awards for our primary schools as well. Probably the most impressive is our 2019 National Blue Ribbon School Award, which was earned by University Place Primary School, one of fewer than 400 schools in the entire nation that received that award. So, we're really, really proud of that. Other awards from other schools as well in the district. And on the next slide, as I transition into speaking a little more specifically about our levy, ultimately, school levies are about our finances and the revenue that we need to operate the school district. And so, I know that our citizens and the council is interested in knowing what is the cost of achieving the results that we achieve from a financial standpoint, as we, again, ask our citizens to support our local levies. And so, this is data that's available publicly on the OSPI website. They provide lots of information for citizens. You can look at individual schools, individual school districts around the state, and look at all kinds of information, attendance, discipline, achievement, and multiple other categories, including how much money school districts spend. And one of the options that's provided is looking at what the per-pupil cost of operating a school district is by district. And so, this takes the same districts that you saw in the academic achievement slides, and just places University Place in terms of the per-pupil expenditure. It's about $13,900 for University Place, puts us not at the bottom by any stretch of the imagination, but also not at the top. So, we kind of look at this and say, for the results that we're achieving as a district, we believe that it's a strong value for our taxpayers and citizens, and we're proud of that. The next slide is a similar piece of data. One of the things that's different in our county, of course, is that there's very different school districts of differing sizes and differing student populations. So, this is just another snapshot. All of the districts you see on this slide are almost the same size as we are. So, just to get another fiscal comparison, these districts are between about 4,600 and 7,000 students. And so, you can see, same trend is that we're achieving some really outstanding results at a very reasonable cost. It's not that anyway, this is not a tremendous commitment from our taxpayers, it is, but we're also proud of the results and our ability to do that pretty efficiently, all things considered. So, and again, that wouldn't be possible without our community's support. So, specifically around propositions one and two, which is on the next slide, just kind of broke this down into 10 basic facts that every citizen should know. And so, I'll start with fact number one, and that's on the next slide, which is simply that we want to make sure that the council and our citizens know that local levies are just a basic fundamental part of school funding in Washington. There have been changes to that funding system, most recently the McCleary decision, and some of the significant state legislation that surrounded that decision, did reduce the reliance of school districts on local funding sources for their operations, but it certainly didn't come close to eliminating it. So, as you can see on this slide, there's 295 school districts in the state of Washington, 289 of them regularly run school levies as a basic part of their funding. The six that don't all have fewer than 60 students. So, it would be fair to say that 100% of the school districts that serve more than 60 kids, we serve almost 5,600, do rely on local levies. So, it's very important, and it's a significant portion of budgets, roughly about 15% of the total operating budget for school districts across the state. So, it's a basic funding source. Here in University Place, this is likely true elsewhere also, but on the next slide, fact number two, is that all of the students in the school district benefit from the funding that we receive in local levies. The money is distributed for various programs and staffing, and all students in grades preschool through 12 at all eight schools benefit. Next slide. Third fact wanting to share, and in some ways, maybe the most important, and I'm not quite sure what's happened to that slide, but I can summarize the most of it. Propositions one and two are replacing levies that are currently expiring and are not new taxes. And so, this is essentially a four-year cycle that goes back many years. We've received wonderful support from our citizens for a very long time, and propositions one and two approved in 2014, and then again in 2018. Will be expiring in 2022, and we're asking our voters to replace and renew those two levies. Next slide. If approved, these levies, both of them, propositions one and two, would provide funding for the next four years, and we likely would be returning to voters in February of 2026 to renew those levies. Next slide. The Educational Programs and Operations Levy has gone through a number of changes over the years. It used to be referred to as the Maintenance and Operations Levy, and in some circles is referred to now as an Enrichment Levy. We prefer the title Educational Programs and Operations, because this is a fundamental source of revenue for many of the programs that our citizens are accustomed to and expect in the schools. You can see the list here. Many of these categories do receive some levels of state funding, but those funding levels are insufficient for the resources that we need to really make our schools run. So, the Educational Programs and Operations Levy funds additional teachers, safety and security personnel, nurses, security staff for our counseling offices, and a variety of other programs that are really important to our kids, and specifically for students who need additional help. So, for example, summer school is a fully levy-funded experience for our students that we're proud to be able to offer for those kids who need to make up a credit, or who need additional support in key learning areas. You can see other items on that list that I didn't mention. Specifically, the lion's share of our music program is funded locally, and also our athletics program is funded by our local levy dollars, coming from Proposition One, which is the Educational Programs and Operations Levy. So, next slide. Proposition, oh, so in terms of the fiscal impact of Proposition One, you can see that we're asking our voters, just as we did four years ago, to approve a $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value tax rate. And you can see the collection amounts by year, for years 2023 through 2026. And as I'll say on a later slide, this is the same rate that we, again, asked for our voters to approve in 2018. Next slide, please. Proposition Two is our Safety, Technology, and Capital Improvements Levy, and there's sort of two general areas that we use this funding for. One is our technology infrastructure and technology equipment that is now just a fundamental aspect of not only running the school district operationally, but also in supporting kids' learning. So, there's a technology component to Proposition Two. And then also, on the more traditional maintenance side of things, we take care of about 740,000 square feet of publicly-owned facilities, and we want to take really good care of those facilities. And so, we also use this funding to make improvements to our HVAC, plumbing, electrical systems, in addition to roofs, and all the things that we all know as some of us who are homeowners, we got to take good care of the properties that we're responsible for. So, on the next slide, also related to Proposition Number Two, just to show that, again, as we did four years ago, we're requesting the voters to approve a 50 cent per $1,000 of assessed value tax rate over a four-year period of time. And you can see that this levy is considerably smaller in the total amount that we're asking voters to provide for us, allowing us just between $2.5 and $3 million annually to complete the kinds of projects that we think are really important and necessary to keep our facilities in good condition and our kids' learning. So, on the next slide, just I wanted to give an example of kind of looking backwards. Some of these things may be familiar to citizens or to the council, but this is just a combination of some of the projects that this funding really makes possible. And it's kind of divided into three areas. There's the technology equipment that we often think of. It's equipment that kids would use, like Chromebooks, the projection systems that we might see visually in classrooms when folks are teaching. And then in addition to that, there's that technology piece behind the scenes. So, the Chromebooks here is an example of those, the equipment that is so necessary for kids to learn in 2021. There's a second component, which is really just taking care of our facilities, and you can see some repairs, like replacing the HVAC system at Narrows View Intermediate School. All of our heating and cooling systems, obviously, in these last couple of years have become critical safety components into the programs that we offer. So, there's a safety element there. But you can see in a number of areas that just the basic maintenance that the buildings and facilities require is part of that over the past couple of years. And then there's another component, primarily our access controls, which is a really important safety piece that limits people's ability to come in and out of our buildings without us knowing it. We've added that at every site, and then we've done a significant renovation at the high school of two chemistry classrooms. So, this is kind of that third category, which is adding important improvements to our facilities, either to improve safety or to improve the quality of our learning program. So, that's looking backwards. And I should also mention, there's a couple of these things were planned. We knew we wanted to add access control technology to all our schools, and then some are unplanned. We did not know that the high school elevator was going to break and stop working, and that's very essential for our population, the kids. So, it was a cost that we didn't know we were going to experience, and this source of revenue allows us to be able to address those issues promptly for our kids and for our staff. Looking forward, just point out on the next slide, several of the projects that we see in our future, these aren't scheduled in terms of exactly when they're going to happen, because we're always in the process of prioritizing the use of those funds, determining what's most essential, and of course, preparing for those unexpected things as they pop up. But additional HVAC system replacements are necessary at a number of our buildings. We have Evergreen Primary scheduled for this coming summer, some roof repairs, and you can see also on the list, just go quickly through that fire panel at the high school, and some other facility needs. We are at a point where our teacher presentation systems are now close to out of date, and so we want to gradually, over the next couple of years, replace those to presentation systems, much like the one you see here in the council chambers, that teachers have high-quality presentation materials and equipment for students. There's also significant investment we're looking to make in technology infrastructure, which is the stuff behind the walls and under the ground that really makes this increasing amount of technology that we're using function at a high level for our kids. And we're also looking at the grounds and fields that our students use, both in the school day as part of their academic programs, but also after school as part of our athletic programs, and then also that the community accesses, quite honestly, when we're not. So, we're looking at, at some point in the next several years, installing field turf at that junior high field on Grandview and Olympic. That field is not in great condition, nor is the track there. It gets a lot of water, has some major issues. So, we're looking at using capital money, should voters approve that in future, for that project, and potentially other improvements to our playgrounds and fields as funding allows. A quick note on that, too, just so the community is aware, if voters were to approve Proposition Two and allow this funding stream to continue for the school district, each of these significant projects is also approved one at a time by our Board of Directors. And so, and when it comes to which projects we do in what order, our board is the voice of the community in those decisions moving forward. Next slide, please. Fact number seven, and I've already spoken to this on earlier slides, but just wanting our citizens to understand that the combined tax rate for both propositions one and two is about $3. We estimate about $3 per $1,000 of assessed value. This, a lot of information on this graph, this just shows the combined rate of those two funding sources since 2007. And so, you can see that these are going to be historically relatively lower combined rates. We still realize that's a significant investment of the community. I don't mean to minimize those numbers at all, but you can just see the historical trend since 2007. On the next slide, again, I believe I've already shared this information, but again, just wanting to remind our citizens that Proposition, oh, so in terms of the fiscal impact of Proposition one, you can see that we're asking our voters, just as we did four years ago, to approve a $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value tax rate. And you can see the collection amounts by year for years 2023 through 2026. And as I'll say on a later slide, this is the same rate that we again asked for our voters to approve in 2018. Next slide, please. Proposition two is our Safety, Technology, and Capital Improvements Levy, and there's sort of two general areas that we use this funding for. One is our technology infrastructure and technology equipment that is now just a fundamental aspect of not only running the school district operationally, but also in supporting kids' learning. So there's a technology component to Proposition two. And then also, on the more traditional maintenance side of things, we take care of about 740,000 square feet of publicly owned facilities, and we want to take really good care of those facilities. And so we also use this funding to make improvements to our HVAC, plumbing, electrical systems, in addition to roofs, and all the things that we all know as some of us who are homeowners, we got to take good care of the properties that we're responsible for. So on the next slide, also related to Proposition number two, just to show that again, as we did four years ago, we're requesting the voters to approve a 50 cent per $1,000 of assessed value tax rate over a four-year period of time. And you can see that this levy is considerably smaller in the total amount that we're asking voters to provide for us, allowing us just between $2.5 and $3 million annually to complete the kinds of projects that we think are really important and necessary to keep our facilities in good condition and our kids' learning. So on the next slide, just I wanted to give an example of kind of looking backwards. Some of these things may be familiar to citizens or to the council, but this is just a combination of some of the projects that this funding really makes possible. And it's kind of divided into three areas. There's the technology equipment that we often think of. It's equipment that kids would use, like Chromebooks, the projection systems that we might see visually in classrooms when folks are teaching. And then in addition to that, there's that technology piece behind the scenes. So the Chromebooks here is an example of those, the equipment that is so necessary for kids to learn in 2021. There's a second component, which is really just taking care of our facilities, and you can see some repairs, like replacing the HVAC system at Narrows View Intermediate School. All of our heating and cooling systems, obviously, in these last couple of years have become critical safety components into the programs that we offer. So there's a safety element there. But you can see in a number of areas that just the basic maintenance that the buildings and facilities require is part of that over the past couple of years. And then there's another component, primarily our access controls, which is a really important safety piece that limits people's ability to come in and out of our buildings without us knowing it. We've added that at every site, and then we've done a significant renovation at the high school of two chemistry classrooms. So this is kind of that third category, which is adding important improvements to our facilities, either to improve safety or to improve the quality of our learning program. So that's looking backwards. And I should also mention, there's a couple of these things were planned. We knew we wanted to add access control technology to all our schools, and then some are unplanned. We did not know that the high school elevator was going to break and stop working, and that's very essential for our population of kids. So it was a cost that we didn't know we were going to experience, and this source of revenue allows us to be able to address those issues promptly for our kids and for our staff. Looking forward, just point out on the next slide, several of the projects that we see in our future, these aren't scheduled in terms of exactly when they're going to happen because we're always in the process of prioritizing the use of those funds, determining what's most essential, and of course, preparing for those unexpected things as they pop up. But additional HVAC system replacements are necessary at a number of our buildings. We have Evergreen Primary scheduled for this coming summer, some roof repairs, and you can see also on the list, just go quickly through that fire panel at the high school and some other facility needs. We are at a point where our teacher presentation systems are now close to out of date, and so we want to gradually, over the next couple of years, replace those to presentation systems much like the one you see here in the council chambers, so that teachers have high-quality presentation materials and equipment for students. There's also a significant investment we're looking to make in technology infrastructure, which is the stuff behind the walls and under the ground that really makes this increasing amount of technology that we're using function at a high level for our kids. And we're also looking at the grounds and fields that our students use, both in the school day as part of their academic programs, but also after school as part of our athletic programs, and then also that the community accesses, quite honestly, when we're not. So we're looking at some point in the next several years installing field turf at that junior high field on Grandview and Olympic. That field is not in great condition, nor is the track there. It gets a lot of water, has some major issues. So we're looking at using capital money, should voters approve that in future for that project and potentially other improvements to our playgrounds and fields as funding allows. A quick note on that, too, just so the community is aware, if voters were to approve Proposition two and allow this funding stream to continue for the school district, each of these significant projects is also approved one at a time by our Board of Directors. And so, and when it comes to which projects we do in what order, our board is the voice of the community in those decisions moving forward. Next slide, please. Fact number seven, and I've already spoken to this on earlier slides, but just wanting our citizens to understand that the combined tax rate for both Propositions one and two is about $3. We estimate about $3 per $1,000 of assessed value. This, a lot of information on this graph, this just shows the combined rate of those two funding sources since 2007. And so you can see that these are going to be historically relatively lower combined rates. We still realize that's a significant investment of the community. I don't mean to minimize those numbers at all, but you can just see the historical trend since 2007. On the next slide, again, I believe I've already shared this information, but again, just wanting to remind our citizens that while this is not cheap for taxpayers in University Place, it provides us with what we believe is a reasonable amount of revenue to provide the education that our kids need, and that it's not excessive, the amount of funding that we use to achieve what we think are really great results. So this is my Great Schools Good Value slide repeated. Fact number nine, and I think this one I've also, probably have not mentioned this one before, you can go to the next slide. Just wanting to make sure that the council is aware that there are limits to school levies, just kind of three different limits. If you don't mind just clicking one more time, I think I have two arrows that will pop up. The first arrow just points out that the current funding system in the state of Washington limits school districts in a couple of ways. One is the rate, and so we are no longer permitted to collect anything larger than $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value. That is a law set in place by the state of Washington. The second limit is a limit set by the voters, and when this picture on this slide is, should look familiar to anybody who casts votes regularly, you'll see something very similar in your, on your ballots in February. But that voter-approved amount is another limit. We are never allowed, no matter what happens with property values or what other needs we might have, we are never allowed to collect in a given year more than that voter-approved amount. And then the third limit, which you don't see reflected on this slide other than to the left there, is there's another feature in the law that has a per pupil limit to what school districts are allowed to collect. That number grows each year with inflation. There's a formula that the state uses. Next year, we're estimating that'll be $2,741 per student. So it's a lot of detail, really. Of those three numbers, you could, for any school district, at any time, you could figure out the per pupil number, the voter-approved amount, and what the rate would generate, we're always required to collect the lesser of those three numbers. So there's some real safeguards in place in the new funding system to make sure that school districts are being responsible for their taxpayers. And then the last slide, and maybe the most, maybe the simplest of all, is just a reminder to the council and to all of the voters, to please make sure that they participate in this election and cast their ballots on or before February 8th, 2022. And there's some resources here for those who are not registered to vote. We'd like to get as much participation as we can. So I think I heard you say that there are not going to be questions, which is certainly fine. And so I will just end by thanking you once again for this opportunity to come and share information about the district and the upcoming levels with the council. If any members of the council have questions, there's some familiar faces on that screen. I think you all know where to find me, so I'd be happy to come back to a meeting or answer any of your individual questions moving forward.
All right. Well, I thank you very much for providing our voters with the basis for the upcoming levy request, and I do encourage our voters to do their research and to get in contact with you or any of your executive staff if they have any additional questions that came up as a result of your presentation. But thank you very much for coming here this evening and for bearing with us during the technological difficulties this evening.
Well, we have our own public meetings, and we definitely understand. And if you'll excuse us, we're going to go tonight as, I believe, our first in-person orchestra concert at Curtis High School since a very, very long time ago. So we're going to try and run over there and see an in-person high school orchestra concert. Go Vikes! Thank you.
All right. Well, have fun and thank you again for coming. Okay, at this time, we are on to our public comments section. We are now open to public comments on the agenda. Individuals in the audience wishing to speak will be given three minutes to provide their comments. We request that you come up to the microphone. For those that are virtual, the information for contacting us remotely is on the screen at this time. Again, all commenters are being provided with three minutes. We ask that you provide your name and address for the record, and we look forward to hearing from you. So this evening, we do have an individual that was in our council chambers this evening. That individual is Chris Saunders. Ms. Saunders, the floor is yours.
You need to turn your mic on, ma'am. There you go. Green is go. Greeting City Council and City Manager and employees. I'm Chris Saunders and the Chair of United for University Place, the Local Community Coalition. And as I was watching the city council conversations and meetings and work plans for the commissions last week, a issue kind of popped up, and I thought it was probably time to have a public, for one of us to step forward and talk a little about what we're doing at the coalition. As I had come to the council in September of 2021 this year and informed you that the reformation of the coalition was beginning, and the first thing that we were going to do was a community assessment, specifically focusing on the services that we have in our community for our citizens. We have had three well-attended meetings with stakeholders representing various organizations along with individuals at each meeting from different organizations like the University Place School District, Families Unlimited Network, Community Connections Place, representatives from Ryan Mellon's office in Pierce County, UP Refuse, UP Library, Pierce County Health, and many others. We are going through a process that takes, we would love to have it done very quickly, but it's important for the process to also develop a sense of buy-in from a large sector of the community. As we're going through this assessment, it brings together the areas in citizen service that are covered in our community, but it also exposes weaknesses in the community. And as we are maybe halfway through the assessment process, already a discussion about a larger community center has unfolded. I personally believe that somewhere around the middle of or end of the first quarter in 2022, we'll begin to form a committee that'll maybe have a better conversation about a community center. Several people have already talked about where a community center could be located, and as you are all aware, Cirque Park is, has a location for a community center. So what we are asking at this point is that the Park Commission would delay their start of their work plan to have the discussion about the Cirque Park Master Plan until June of 2022, so that we can complete the assessment, work together with them, find out what their findings are and their vision is, and bring together the two parties to have a broader community conversation. That is what we're looking for at this point, just delay it about six months. We're just maybe that far out till we'll get done. So that's our request, and expect that everyone giving some input will be, will give us a very good opportunity for meeting a broad stroke of our community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Saunders. There are no other public, there's no one from the public here. Is anybody on the phone? Okay. With that, I will close the public comments section and move on to our next item, which is the Consent Agenda. And I would like to make a motion to amend the Consent Agenda to pull out item I. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I want to be supportive of your motion. I think the approach is to...
Right. Do it the other way around.
Yeah, there you go. Right.
Do I have an emotion for approval of the agenda? I jumped the gun. Sorry. Approve the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to move the approval of the agenda as amended by pulling item I, but approving the rest of it. Consent.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Figaro, a second.
Okay. Is there anybody objecting to approving the agenda with the exception of item I? I don't see any. Motion carries for that. The reason I pulled item I is that I wanted to note, I had a conversation with Mayor Protem on item I, and he just wanted to make it public that he had some concerns about the Parks Commission work plan as submitted, in that during their presentation, they had made mention of the smoking and drone ordinance that we had sent to them, resolution we had sent, but we had never received a report out on that to have a discussion of their recommendations, nor, he also had some concerns about the Cirque Master Plan recommendation. He feels that they may be moving a little bit ahead of us on that. Other than voicing those concerns, there were no other objections. So any additional comments to that item? Yes, Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you and he bringing that up. What my mind was, that we were going to have a robust discussion about all of the work plans to include this one during our retreat. And so I just want to reassure myself that that's when it's going to happen, or do we have some other kind of mechanism or process to actually get at, you know, the details of all those work plans?
No, I think you were correct. That was my assumption also, but I wanted to make it public and honor his request to bring it forward. Councilmember McCluskey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my recollection that we do need to hear the outcome of the vaping and the smoking in the parks, because I don't think that it came before council.
No, it did not.
So I would like that to come forward. And it was also my understanding that the approval of these work plans, we would have also a discussion at our retreat, so we can add some of our ideas and things and make adjustments then. So the approval at this point in time, I think can go forward. My other comment in regards to, and I was going to talk about that at the retreat, but I'll state it now, is that for a community center placement at Cirque Park, it's already in the master site plan, so there may not be a need to go and redo a whole master site plan for Cirque Park. And so before we pull that trigger, get a consultant, you know, just looking forward, just a look back and see to make sure that what we have in the master site plan is good to go for the next decade. And if it is not due or redo, and obviously, if the community is interested in a community center, there is land there, and they could bring forward their proposals and their fundraising ideas to the council at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figaro.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not believe that when we talked about the retreat taking up time for any work plans, it wasn't for the purpose of revisiting any work plans that was being presented, but to talk about any new things, any new ideas or amendments or changes or deletions of some sort that we see. But either way, even if that was true, or true that we would get into the details, why would we approve the work plans and then essentially study them? And I don't believe that those work plans should be studied at a retreat. I don't think that's a proper place for them. I think that there should be study sessions, a presentation, and then a study session on their presentation and their work plans, and either, you know, make the deletions then or changes or whatever. But I don't think that this is the right process. We would never get anything else. This is basically would be a retreat becomes a work session for work plans, which could take up the whole, more than a half a day. So I disagree with full respect to my council members that this is not the place to be doing, the retreat is not the place to be studying any of the work plans that they brought forward. And I do agree, and I was going to bring this up at the retreat, was how our present, how our work plans approved, because I wasn't in agreement in the presentations, and then come forward with an approval right after that. To me, I think that we need to, as a council, agree that work plans should be, would be given a presentation, and then we study that presentation, and then move on to an approval after that. So not to repeat myself, but I don't believe that we should be doing this at the retreat.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Figaro. Councilmember Keel, your final words?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to say that I agree with what Councilmember McCluskey was talking about as far as, but I think that the commission, they've got a lot of work, they've done a lot of work. We've worked with them. There's plans that are out there that are ready to go. And my hope is, is that if there are citizens that need and have input to that, that they catch up with where the commission is, as opposed to, you know, us kind of putting the brakes on things. But, you know, there could be some way that we can kind of pull them all together. The big thing that I see, though, is, and we've been talking about this for many years, and people have a lot of great ideas, but the bottom line is, we need the money. That's the bottom line. You know, if we have the funds, we can build something. And so I'm, I am kind of at the end of, let's talk about, we all know we need a rec center. I mean, we don't have to study that. I mean, what we need is a funding plan. And so if there are people out in the community that want a rec center, we all, we don't need to study that we want a rec center. What we need to do is get people geared up to pay for the thing. Okay? And, you know, and however we do that. If it's, you know, some bond or levy, then all those people talking about a rec center, I would encourage them to talk to all their neighbors to say, let's put the $2 per thousand that we need, $2 per thousand we need, or whatever the number is, to buy the rec, to build a rec center. That's what I'm hoping that we do. My last point is, to Councilmember Figaro's comment, I think we got some semantics words going here that may be a little bit off. I'm not talking about studying the whole thing over, and I wouldn't even use the word "study." What we said was is that we do have to give them a resolution to do some work on some things, and I would like to start, not finish the conversation, or have the whole conversation during the retreat, but start the conversation, and then give staff some direction on what we think about a resolution, and then let them go off and draft that. And if we had to have follow-on conversations after the retreat, then we'll do that. But I'd like to, I think that we need to start that conversation then.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Keel. And thank you, everyone, for your input. This will be discussed, I'm sure, further and in depth. With that, I would like to ask for a motion to approve item I, the adoption of the approved Park Advisory Commission 2022 Preliminary Work Plan. Again, the operative is preliminary.
Yes, this is Councilmember Keel. Mayor, I move approval of the preliminary plan.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Figaro, a second.
Okay. Are there any objections? Well, thank you very much. It passes unanimously, and thank you for allowing me to represent Mayor Protem Worthington in his comments. All right, with that, the next item on the agenda is dissolution of the University Place Town Center Authority. I would like to ask our attorney, Mr. Matt Kaser, to come on screen for a staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Matt Kaser is city attorney. I will...
I will do my best to try and make up for some lost time. As council may recall, in the Wayback Machine, back in 2011, the city council formulated the UP Town Center Project Authority as a holding entity effectively to issue the original bonds for the Town Center project. Those bonds were refinanced, as council may recall, two years ago, and reissued under the name of the City of University Place. So as it stands right now, those bonds have been fully redeemed. We've had the opportunity to check with our finance department, as well as with outside bond council. So there are, there are no other assets that we know of, of the Town Center Authority or other liabilities that we know of, of the Town Center Authority. It's just sitting there. Under the code section, when the city council establishes, established the authority, it provided in part quoting from code, the authority may be dissolved for any reason by the city council, that dissolution is warranted, and then it goes on from there for other conditions. Right now, as I stated, it's just sitting there, there's no assets, there's no liabilities. The one upside to the dissolution on this, when we initially started looking at it, we recognized it was an entity subject to audit, we believed that the audit cost would likely run into the thousands. I was advised, last year's audit on this came out to $113, but it's still something that's carried on the books, has a legal entity. The action for council tonight is whether you want to keep this legal entity or simply dissolve it when it's not holding anything else. With that, recognizing I'm trying to make up for some lost time, I will yield the floor back to council if there's any further comments or questions.
Okay, since this is a, an action item, the next item is the public comment section. As of this evening, we received no public comment through, via email. Do we have anybody online? So we have nobody in chambers, there's no one online. Can we flash up, just in case somebody is watching, the, the procedure for dialing in for public comment? We wait. We wait. Unfortunately. If you are watching remotely, you can call 1-509-342-7253. Use conference ID number 240-744-65 pound. And here are the instructions. I will give it a minute to see if anybody attempts to call in before I close the public comment section. All right, nobody has made an attempt to call in, so I'm going to close the public comment section, and it is up for council consideration. Do I have a, a motion to approve the consideration?
Madam Mayor, so, Councilmember Keel, I move approval.
Okay, Councilmember Figueroa.
This is Councilmember Figueroa, second.
Okay, this is time for council comments or questions. Are there any comments or questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Wood.
Understanding that this organization isn't doing much right now, how hard is it to restart this or similar organization if we decide we need something like this in the future?
We would have to go through largely the same process if we wanted to fire it up again. The good news is, we have all the paperwork. So even though while we take it off the books, we can go back into the historical archives for that if we needed to, we'd still have to go through much of the original process, and a lot of that would be done in consultation with bond council. So mechanically, it may be simple, but the process and the financial part is largely just going to be what's animating it, if we ever had to do it again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Keel.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This comment, just for the public, if there is anyone out there listening, I, I've had the opportunity to talk with staff, and I'm sure all of my, many of my colleagues have as well, to really understand what we're doing here. I mean, this is something that we do no longer need. And in particular about the bonds, I, I was concerned when they talk about town center and bonds and all those kinds of things like that, I was like, whoa, which bonds are we talking about? And so I, I'm confident that we are talking about bonds that have been really retired. And I think that's a, that's a very positive thing for our city. I mean, you know, we, we've been in debt many, many years, and I would just tip my hat to staff and to this council that have been working very hard with these past, at least the past, you know, I know 12 years I've been on this council, to retire the bonds. And, and this is a group that we have done, and I, I'm of the opinion that I'm, I'm real ecstatic that we're now able to close this, this, this part of our business down, because we've done the hard work of retiring those bonds.
Any other council comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, city clerk, can you please conduct the vote call?
Councilmember Figueroa?
Councilmember Figueroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Councilmember Wood, aye.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, aye.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Madam Mayor, point of order, I did not get the privilege of cast of vote.
Oh, Councilmember Fleming.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, thank you very much, and sorry about that, Councilmember Fleming. At this time, we're on to the city manager report, may I ask Mr. Steve Sugg to come forward and on camera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Over the next 12 months, our engineers, our city engineers are going to be building five street improvement projects. One of them is under construction right now, it's the Alameda Extension, which is a segment of Alameda between 67th, Second Avenue and 64th Avenue. Completion of that will complete the gap in Alameda and provide a continuous roadway between 67th and CIRC Drive. Along that stretch of road, speed radar feedback signs will be installed to help control speeds, because we know that that has been a concern, and those have been shown to be effective. The, that project's funded through traffic impact fees and scheduled to be completed this spring, spring 2022. So moving on into 2022, Chambers Lane, Chambers Creek Road, Phase One, sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, streetlights along that road between Bridgeport and 81st Avenue, approximately where Charles Wright Academy driveways are. The project also includes a pedestrian signalized crosswalk, which the, which council asked before, and that's included in the design, in the vicinity of Charles Wright Academy. Design's underway, construction's anticipated to begin spring 2022. 35th Street, Phase One, our third project. This one is a prod, this is 35th Street between Bridgeport Way and 67th, sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, streetlights. It also includes a signalized pedestrian crosswalk in the vicinity of Morrison Road. So we've got right-of-way acquisition underway, scheduled to begin construction in summer of 2022, barring any unforeseen's. Our fourth project, Grandview Drive overlay, a much-needed overlay is going to be put down on Grandview Drive between 48th Street, Briston Wood Roundabout, and 62nd Avenue Court West, which is the entrance to the Chambers Bay Golf Course. That section of road badly needed a lot of traffic. We're also bringing the ADA ramps up to current standards, construction summer 2022. And finally, our fifth project is the overlay of Lakewood Drive between Hannah Pierce Road and 64th Street, new pavement overlay, again, summer of 2022. So a lot of construction work, it's been a little quiet during the pandemic, but things are ramping up. Our engineers have been very busy during that period of time doing the designs, and so you're going to start seeing a lot of construction in 2022. You're already seeing the beginnings of it at Alameda if you drive by there. So that's my report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sugg. We are now moving to council reports and comments. Councilmember Figueroa?
Councilmember Figueroa does not have any comments, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Keel?
Mayor, no comment for me tonight, surprise, surprise.
Councilmember Wood, do you have any comments or report outs?
I have no comments, thank you.
Councilmember McCluskey, any comments or report outs?
Yes, I do, Mayor Belisi, and I'm so sad I can't hear from Kent Kill tonight. I wanted to hear about that transit update, darn it.
Rub it in.
But anyway, moving on, Mr. Sugg, I'd like to commend your city staff for getting the Charles Wright grant sooner than and later, that was awesome and amazing, our citizens will be really happy. Not only Charles Wright, but also the people trying to traverse back and forth along Chambers Road. And the 35th Street corridor to the north of, well, not really, I guess the east of Bridgeport, is certainly well traversed with pedestrians. So since you've done such a swell job getting a grant and things done on that side, think about the one going to the west towards Sunset and Ranview, because that needs to be, as you know, as we all know. I would love to see sidewalks along that corridor as well, because that also is a strategic going to our town center project as well. So kudos to your staff for continuing growing our sidewalks. Another comment I would like to make is, I'm getting really concerned about shape and the direction it's moving. The board hasn't even convened, we don't have a representative on it, and already I'm reading reports from our, in our, the News Tribune, and also other reports coming out from the county council, the executive office, and it's really disconcerting, because they're moving the train without our input. They're already discussing, should cities have autonomy, or should it be exclusively a board? Didn't we not, and did other cities were extremely adamant that it was a volunteer position, placement, and we would not be strapped to the outcomes of this board? And we already, I'm already feeling strap, it's already feeling the straps tighten, especially when the News Tribune is doing editorials in support of some of these outcomes without an official board. I think that is unconscionable. I think, you know, we were misled at this point, and that's really, like I said, disconcerting, and I think we need to be really cognizant as a, as a city council, as to, I'm glad we're on the board, because we can also help drive the train and redirect it. But also, whether we're on or off the board, I think some of these policies and directives, we're not going to have any control over, just like the PSRC and all, and, and the Growth Management Act, and we have tried really hard to keep our city so that citizens have that look and feel of University Place. We became a city because we were directed by the county, and we did not like the direction it was going. As we noted, the forefathers that have passed on left a legacy and a hope, and it would be really sad, and also doing them a disservice for all the wonderful services that they have done for our city, if we're going to be led by the county once again, you know, like, what's the point? What's the point of being called City of University Place? We may just be an ancillary part of City of Tacoma, if we're going to be directed by the county in, in, in the City of Tacoma, through how, how we are being mandated with our housing, because as we know, our housing stock and the diversity of that, and how we deal with the people for affordable housing, is what we're doing, and we're doing that pretty well, and we have that on our radar, and we're working on it in 2022. You know, I'm just so frustrated that we, we as a city council is going to have to fight and get our other cities and towns together to, to fight this, so that our cities and towns will have the feel, the look, and the, as well as welcoming for people of all economic strataces to come into our city in the way that our city wants it to happen, not mandating by somebody else's values and dictates. So I'm off my soapbox here. I'll move on. I would like to also, also say to, to our former council member Lee, how thankful I am that he chose to go through the appointment process, and our council appointed him eventually as a full-fledged city council member. It not only meant a lot to our city, he brought value, he brought his wisdom, he also brought all his, his education and livability and all his volunteerism that he had done, finger leads not only in our community, in the school district, all to the city council seat, and it was very powerful in, in the past year that he was there. And I would like to honor that, that legacy by just stating how grateful I am that he chose to come on our council for, for that year, and that he would, and I know he's going to continue helping us out as a city council, he'll be sending us emails each and every one of us, and now he'll have more time for the school district to help them along as well, because we know that's his other passion too. So with that, I'll close my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCluskey. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No reports but comments. You know, first, I had a different leadoff, but to Councilmember McCluskey, spot on with the concerns you have about shape. You know, if you recall during our, our discussions and debates, it was one of my greatest concerns that the county would be dominating this whole process because of their zest, and that's truly what it is, to uniformize, if that's such a term, the county. And so you do lose your identity in the process. You know, it's a predict-
You have, you have gone mute, Councilmember Fleming. You hit your mute button.
I did not.
You hit it.
Okay, where did you lose me? Because I was in a role, talking to myself. But you know, it, you know, I'll kind of summarize that part. It was a fear that I had from the very beginning of this, putting this together with shape. The city is at risk of losing its identity, because the county agenda is to standardize the county throughout. And for those reasons, I, I really, and, and lose our control. And it's, it is for those reasons that I think this council really needs to rethink that whole process before we get any further down the tracks where we can't stop the train. I know there were promises made to all of us, that, you know, should it not work out, we could always get off the board, we could do this, we could do that. I will tell you, when the time comes, if it gets down the road, just try and do it. I think it'll be very, very difficult at that time. So it's something for us that as a council, certainly to, to think about. You know, I wanted to comment on Superintendent Chamberlain's comments, because I, I thought it was a very well-done presentation tonight. You know, we as a city, we as a community can be very, very proud that we have a school district that is, at any given time in the state, in, in the top three, three percent or better, for its performance and outcomes for students. A lot of times, people do look at these levies as an additional tax versus looking at it as we're just renewing what we've already approved in the past, and I think he made a good, a good point in doing that. While the majority of the citizens of University Place support the school district, you know, we do have that faction that will say, well, my kids no longer go there, so why should I support a levy or a bond for the district? And the answer is, because when we had kids there, and I had three that went through that system, somebody else paid, paid the taxes and levies, so my kids could be the benefactors. So we pay it, play it forward or play it backwards, I don't know which way, direction you go, but we, as a community, have, I think, an obligation to continue to support- continue to support our school districts and the excellent jobs that they're doing. You know, and lastly, I just want to say thank you, a true thank you to the staff, audiovisual communications department, whatever we're calling ourselves there. I thought tonight's presentation for our past council members, it was beyond words. You know, I had the privilege to work with all three of those individuals, and while they were all, and it was an interesting thing, they were all very quiet council members when they served, but they were giant leaders in this community in their own way. I mean, these are people who walked the walk, rolled up their hands, weren't afraid to go out and physically get dirty to make our community a better place. And so we were all better off for that in the end. But the way the staff has captured that, I'll start crying here, super job, and thank you, just heartfelt thank you for that. With that said, we're blessed to have the council that we currently have and, and moving forward, because I think they, you likewise emulate all those, all those values. So thank you all, and I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. I wanted to, I know earlier this week, I sent you out the information on the shape, both their legislative, proposed legislative agendas as well as their work plan. I will be attending their first executive board meeting this Wednesday on our council's behalf, and I want to thank you for confirming what I already suspected, that we were not going to be happy with the, with a proposed agenda, which has not been discussed by any of the supporting members of shape, and I will be sure to let the, the executive board know this, and also their work plan has not been something that was discussed by the majority of the members, and I, and if this continues, I myself will not support an ongoing attendance. But I do feel it is vital that we be aware of what is going on, and unfortunately, the only way to be aware of what's going on is to be a part of this, this process, seeing as how they are going back behind the scenes, you know, and doing their legislative asks on the behalf of Pierce County as a shape representative, and that in turn affects legislation that comes down to us from the state, as well as through the Puget Sound Regional Council and the federal government, and we need to be aware of what's coming so that we can fight and let our voices be heard. So I will be sure and be very vocal that our, that the council here does not approve of using shape at this time for legislative proposals, and that we need to have a more concerted approach to our work study, that, our work plan that takes into consideration input from all jurisdictions that are members, not just from the City of Tacoma and Pierce County. So I also wanted to let you know, today, I attended a ribbon-cutting for a business in University Place on Bridgeport. It's called, it's a dual-purpose, co-located business. It's Fox Medical and my own gym. And when I went there, I went, what, a medical facility and a gym? How, how does this work? And it's basically a medical facility, and you can come in and have an hour-long appointment with a doctor, as opposed to your 15 minutes that you get with your primary care, care physician. You have a whole hour to discuss your, your primary care with a doctor. And if you are in the need of weight loss or consultation, you also have access to a gym facility, so you can have a medical, medically-supervised workout. And so it's interesting, and it's individual rooms in the workout gym. It's not a group of 15, 20 people working out in the gym. You, it's you and your, and the trainer working separately, and they have the room set up with COVID in mind, so each, each room that you would be in would be solely accessible by you and the trainer. And I'm afraid that COVID will be something that's in our future, so they, they are definitely ahead of the game on this one with that. But I would encourage anybody that is interested in looking for medical provider or a personal trainer, that we do have a new locally-owned business in University Place that you should be checking out. Councilmember Keel, do you have a final brief note?
Yeah, I, I do, Mayor. Yeah, just real quickly, I'm glad that there's a gym. I mean, the shape I'm in right now, if I went to the gym, I probably wouldn't be in a medical facility right next to me, so.
You would have, you would have.
Yeah. The question I had was on shape, do we, have we paid them our dues or admission fee, whatever that fee was, $11,000? And if not, I hope not. And if not, I would really want us to have another conversation before that check is given to them around where we feel and how we feel about what's going on.
We did approve, we did approve joining the, the inter-local agreement through consent agenda.
Did, did the money, has the money gone over to them yet?
Well, that is something you can ask staff after the meeting.
Right. And so I guess I'm just trying to make a statement here, is if it hasn't, then I, I would, I would like to maybe pump the brakes on that a little bit to, for us to have this nice conversation about how things are going before we actually cut the check. Even though we did it in the consent agenda, I think we've got a reason to pause right now.
All right. Councilmember Fleming, final words.
Madam Mayor, I, it's more of a request to you when you address shape, and that would be to put on the record that we, as a community and a city, are adamant that we maintain our independence in how we guide, direct, and make decisions within housing and other matters that shape is addressing, so that we don't lose that down the road.
Yep, yep, definitely. Okay. At this time, we are moving into study session. We are going to be reviewing the SWIM comprehensive plan consultant selection. May I have Mr. Todd Smith come on screen, please, for staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Todd Smith, the NPDS coordinator for the city. I'm here tonight to talk to you about selecting an engineering consultant to update our stormwater comprehensive plan. It is necessary at this time to review and update our stormwater comprehensive plan, as the date of our existing one is August 1999, and I'm sure there are some things that have changed since then in both our storm system, our stormwater management needs, and including some new NPDES requirements. On October 15th, we advertised for an RFQ. On November 18th, city staff conducted interviews. Staff found that Gray and Osborne, Inc. is the best qualified for the project based upon their extensive experience with developing stormwater comp plans and hydraulic analysis. The scope of work is in your packet as Exhibit A. There are six major components of the comp plan. One, characterization and analysis of our existing stormwater system. Two, analysis of present water quality within our stormwater system. Three, review and update of our SWIM goals, NPDS permit requirements, and related policies. Evaluation and analysis of our SWIM fees, which are based upon a dwelling unit price or per square foot of impervious service. These fees support existing stormwater maintenance, operation, and capital needs. Number five, update and recommend future capital projects. And finally, six, which is a new requirement of the NPDS permit, is develop a SMAP, which is called a Stormwater Management Action Plan. This requirement causes us to evaluate our eight drainage basins and then prioritize them by the status of their risk for capacity of water quality issues or capacity. Capital projects are then to be identified, which will address these risks and needs, most likely during the next permit period, which will be 2024 to 2029. The comprehensive plan will give us a framework and a guide for years to come. Gray and Osborne submitted their proposal in the amount of $140,000, and staff feel that this is reasonable based upon the amount of work that is needed. The detail of that is in your packet in Exhibit B. The money is budgeted in our SWIM fund, and no appropriation will be required. This concludes my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a study session. Are there any council members that have any questions regarding Mr. Smith's presentation? If so, please raise your hand. Councilmember Wood?
So just a quick question. When I was out talking to folks during the campaign, there's a, a very small population, but it lived right along, that lived right along Chambers Creek, I think towards the north end of our city, who were, were reporting that they were seeing more flooding and risk of flooding in recent years than they had in the past. Is that part of this study? Would that area be covered?
This is part. Yes, it is. It will be, we have eight storm basins in our community, and it's an analysis of all eight, and it'll both look at capacity, which will be the flooding issues, and not be able to handle capacity of the stormwater. And then, two, it'll be what are the needs in regards to possible extra pollutants and stuff we hadn't seen in the past. So yes, all, all basins will be addressed.
Will this study also make recommendations for, say, mitigation? Or is it just going to identify a problem? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figaroa?
Thank you, Mayor. The, once this is done and completed and we pass that new plan, how, how, how long is that good for?
Well, most of, there's really no set date, but I hope it's less than the 23 years than, that we've done to this point. But a lot of the other cities and municipalities I've been looking at examples of have, they're for about 10 years, and that provides, that helps you with your capital list. You can pretty much forecast out about 10 years, and then I think you start to get, reaching a little too far with your, your estimates at that point. And hopefully, you make your capital list and you hit most of your items on there, and you can redo your list sooner than later.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I just have a couple questions for you. You're talking about the public meetings for, for this update. How, how are you thinking about going about the, the public meetings? What, what is the format, the design of those?
Well, I, I think since, since this whole COVID situation we're in, I think a hybrid would be a, a good model. I know from a lot of my other education outreach, I've actually had more people show up and participate in this sort of format than by the actual in-person. So I'm guessing that'll be, of course, I'll talk to the consultant and find out what they recommend, but I think that's probably the route we're going to take.
Okay. Are you going to send out postcards to each individual home, like we've sometimes have done in the past for other notifications?
If that's what we've done in the past, I'd, I'd consider that.
Okay. And, and the other question that, that I had is that I know you're concentrating on the, the floodwater around the stormwater basins, but there is other flooding in, in our city that I think should be noted. As Councilmember Wood had, had noted with the community there, the area around Louise, you know, so there's a, we get, I get, anyway, emails in regards to some pulling of collected water where, where they can traverse in and out of their driveways, and also the Bay Island around where there's a sewer pump. It gets at times flooded where cars have a hard time traversing onto the south spit in that area there. And one of, one, it looks to me like during a high storm area, there's actually a pump that's pumping water, more water onto the street. It might be homeowners' sump pump. And so just sort of looking at those kind of things, because it, if you're in a sedan, you know, it's hard, it would be hard pressed on some occasions to float through to the other side to get to your home. So I would, I would target that area and, and see kind of like what you see going on. I know that in the past, our city staff had done, tried to do some quick fixes by putting bump, you know, bumpers, what I call little, little, you know, we call them the speed bumps, but you know, the little water bumps that kind of, you know, direct the water into the storm basin, and the storm basin, it can't really handle it, even if it is cleared, because I try to clear it when I do some of my walks around Bay Island. And I, I know with a, a storm that, a heavy storm, it's heavy storms, that it's way over capacity. So anyway, those are my, my comments for you, Mr. Todd. Mr. Smith, thank you.
I would look forward to a list of some of those when we start getting into the public comment and with the community, if you have places that you've noticed around town, I would, I would love to get a list of those to make sure that they're addressed.
Councilmember Wood?
I just wanted to kind of emphasize something Councilmember McCloskey said, which was, whatever we have done in the past for community outreach, I'd strongly recommend that we do a very strong and robust community outreach to allow during this public comment period, so the people know this is being talked about and have the opportunity to discuss what, what's going on in their particular areas of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Figaroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on that, just to give a vote of confidence on that end, is Todd, we, we picked the postcard because the normal typical way that the city was doing notification was not enough. So we, council asked for the extra effort of postcards, and it worked. So that's the reason, and I would encourage that as well. On another note, comment is, I know you mentioned the, very specific sites already that you will be, you know, studying and, and commenting on, but would this include, or how, how do, let me reword it, how will new developments, and we have some large developments that are going up, how, for example, where Haps property is, where AMC Theater is, other areas where there are some big developments going on, where, will this study look at any of those areas to make sure that they're part, if they're not a part of, of these segments that you're talking about already, established segments, will they be looked at, just to make sure we're, we're not missing something?
Yes, they will. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Todd. My quick question or two things. One is, when we did this in the past, we found that we had some retention ponds that were dumping contaminants into the sound, and I thought at that time we mitigated for those. Will this new study go back and relook at those particular ponds? The second one is, you mentioned all the ones that the, all the ponds that the city currently has oversight. What about the number, we, we have several in the city of private retention ponds. Is that part of this study? And if not, why not? And if so, how do we do that?
It is part of the study. When I said there's eight storm basins in the city, that basically all water, whether it's private or public, goes somewhere to eight different locations. And so whether it's private or public, those, the analysis will be done to see if we've, through build-out, we've started to have overcapacity in some of the areas that our system can't handle. That will be looked at. Yeah, so these are all, just to be clear, it, it covers the entire city.
All right. Any other questions from council at this time? Councilmember Figaroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Todd, on that note, there are some developments that are permitted, they're not, they're not ready to go. There, some are, you know, actually being developed, others are permitted or close to, or being, they're, I don't know what the words would be, but basically, they've come to the city and talked about, you know, their interest in certain developments. Will you be looking at those or only developments that have started?
Well, I think they look at the, the- Well, I think they look at the possibility of all future develop in the areas, and of course, anything that's gone through our city process is included in our basic stormwater.
But a lot of these conversations have not really gone through the process completely, but they have started a conversation with the city. So, I would encourage for this consultant to be part of this, as to what conversations have been started, and was the likelihood of them proceeding and for them to be taken in account.
Sure. I think that's possible.
Because there's some big ones that are being talked about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other final comments? Well, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your report out. This will be on our agenda for approval at our next meeting, I believe, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I would like to ask our Police Chief Greg Primo to come on and talk with our next study session, which is the Alarm Permit Program Review. Chief, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. And tonight, yeah, I'm here to do a review of our Alarm Permit Program. In your council packet, you had a rather lengthy review in there, and what I've done is taken about five slides of kind of the highlights from that packet material to kind of highlight here for during the meeting. If you recall, so I'll give you a little bit of background on the alarm program. So, we inherited the Alarm Permit Program from Pierce County at the time of incorporation. This included the software that Pierce County was using. We inherited all the elements of their kind of response procedures and whatnot related to the program. And then, in 2020, Pierce County advised that the software that we were using was going to go away in 2021. The county had gone away from that software several years prior to that, but it had kept providing us with technical support to maintain that database. And at that point, they decided that they were no longer going to be doing that and shutting everything down. So, it kind of forced the city here to decide what we wanted to do moving forward. And last fall, we had some study sessions around the Alarm Permit Program, and the staff made some recommendations to council. And you all amended the alarm code to allow for annual renewals. Starting in January of 2021, we eliminated the automatic free false alarm response and went to a standard $100 false alarm fee for each false alarm, and then also created the $40 permit fee at that part. Go ahead, next slide. So, over the course of this year, here's some statistics on our alarm calls. You can see that we had a total of 458 alarm calls, and this is all types of alarms. Broke those down into commercial, residential, and then you could see robbery alarms, which are typically your silent alarms. Those are activated by an individual within a business. You can also have it as a residence, but primarily, those are at businesses. Panics are also the same thing. Those are activated by an individual. The other alarm calls, 72 of those, you can see those are maybe a neighbor called in an audible alarm, not sure if it's a house or a vehicle. Also, fire alarms sometimes get dispatched to us. At the time, we're not really sure it's a fire alarm, so officers are dispatched, and then once there's updated information, it's a fire alarm and gets recoded. And of those, all of, all those calls, 283 were cleared by an officer as a, with a false alarm report. We did experience a decrease in false alarm incidents over this year. And out of all of these calls of the 458, we only had three that we, that were cleared with a formal report, which means there's some sort of confirmed or at least suspected criminal activity at the location. Go to the next call or slide, please. Next is permit information. So, originally, if you recall, last year when we were doing the study on this, we had no idea on the number of permits that we had in the city. We had a one-time permit application at the time, and there was no duty upon the alarm owner to update the city when either they moved or no longer had their alarm system. We had a database that was several thousand, more than 4,000 alarm permits that was in that database. And so, we kind of did an estimate at that time that we might have 3,000 to 4,000 active alarm permits. Currently, year-to-date, as through the end of November, we have 1,956 active permits, and you can see the breakdown between residential and commercial. The $40 permit fee was charged to each equally to residential and commercial permits, and our revenue so far this year is at 78,799. Go to the next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, finally, here's the assessment on this. So, having this annual permit program has increased our accuracy on the database around alarms, the number of alarms in the city, the permit owners in, within the city. It's also, I think, a key thing to talk about is to reduce the number of repeat locations. This was a topic that we discussed last year, was the number of repeat violators. And for last year, we saw, we had that conversation, we had 10 different locations that had five or more violations, so false alarms, and the max was nine at one location. For this year, we've only had, the max is four calls at one location, we've only had four different locations on that list. So, we're seeing a, I always call it a dramatic decrease in kind of the repeat offenders kind of ignoring the ongoing problems. Overall, we saw a reduced number of false alarm calls. And then, finally, the additional revenue, the revenue from this whole program, again, goes directly to the Public Safety Fund. It is not, does not go to the general fund. It is dedicated to the Public Safety Fund here. I'll conclude the report with this question about why we have a permit program, why is there a permit fee? And to me, I think you have to start with the question around whether or not the city wants to respond to alarms. As we show with the data, 99% of alarm calls, there's no verified criminal activity. So, about 99% of the time, we're sending officers to a scene, or dispatching officers to a call that they don't need to be responding to. Now, it is a pretty common service that police agencies do provide to their citizens, and we feel that the citizens of University Place do want to have that type of response available to them. The question then comes as to, does the city get compensation for that response? And then, how do you get that compensation? And we do it through a combination of the permit fee and the false alarm fee. There's other ways to make some adjustments to the response, and I think you'll see in some agencies, when a false, or I'm sorry, an alarm comes in, the agency won't respond until there's multiple trips of an alarm. So, it may need required multiple zones to have an activation. They may require an actual subscriber or property owner to be on scene before they dispatch an officer. We chose to maintain a response procedure that just says, once we're notified of an alarm, we're going to send an officer to that call. There's some agencies, not necessarily here regionally, but outside, I've heard of in other states, that they just don't respond to alarms at all because of the statistics around it. They require a physical person outside of the police department, so they might have security guards that they tell alarm companies that they need to provide to respond, to verify that there's a police needed at the call. So... Lost my, thank you. So, the other question related to that is, do we, do we charge for other false alarm or certain false responses? And the question is, no, we don't, we don't charge somebody if they call in, say, hey, I believe, you know, there's a suspicious person out front, and we get there, and it ends up being the neighbor who's looking for their dog who got loose. That's true. We don't charge for other types of false responses. What I would say to that question is, we also don't have other types of calls that statistically, 99% of the time is a false response. I think if we did, then we would have a conversation as to whether or not we should be responding to that type of call from the beginning. An example I can give you is many years ago, when cellphones became a thing. I can remember this as much, it starts to date me a little bit, but I can remember when cellphones came out and 911 calls came in from cellphones. And initially, it was our policy that we would try to dispatch if we had a general location for that cellphone activation. As that call type started to really develop into a massive amount of calls, because so cellphones became much more prevalent, and we're realizing that there really was nothing associated with that call, it was just a hangup. There wasn't, you know, somebody in the background that said something or any other type of information that would lead you to believe that there was a problem there. Those calls, we don't respond to. It's just, there's so many of them because of all the accidental things, and there's not always an address specifically identified with it. So, I use that as an example of, we did look at a type, call type, that generated a lot of false responses, and therefore, we don't respond to those anymore. So, with that final comment there, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to council and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. It is now open for council comments. If you have a comment, please raise your hand. No comments? Councilmember Wood.
All right, I'll go first. So, a couple of quick questions for you, Greg.
Sure.
First, were all the alarms actually responded to in person by an officer, or were any just checked?
No, I would say, you take that number I had on there that was 258 false, or, two, I'm sorry, it was 283 of those calls were cleared with a false alarm report. Those are guaranteed that there was an officer that responded to verify that it was a false alarm. Some of them, you could have, were canceled by the officer. For example, if we had a windstorm, they might have went out for the first one, but a half hour later, hour later, the call came back in, it's still going to register as a call, because they're going to get, the, I'm sorry, 911 is going to dispatch that officer, but they're going to probably cancel that call and say, no, I was just out there, it's the wind, it's weather, or maybe they were there because there was a dog running around inside that triggered a motion sensor. So, there's not always an officer that responds. That 283 number is more accurate in terms of a guaranteed an officer responded to the, physically to the scene.
Okay. And then, were all of the false alarms fined?
So, no, they're not. In the packet, I did cover false alarm invoices. So, we invoiced 153 false alarms throughout the year. And of those, and this is a good point, I'm glad you asked that question, we don't necessarily, every single one, does a person get invoiced immediately for that. We, one of the reasons that we recommended last year to keep this program in-house instead of outsourcing this to a company, was the ability to have our staff work with homeowners, with alarm owners about their alarm issue. So, last, this, this year, so far this year, we have waived 75 of these false alarm fees, if you will, just through the conversation between the homeowner and our staff here. A lot of times, it's, we're learning that maybe there's a battery issue or some sort of technical malfunction that they, they experienced with their system, and they're working with their alarm company to get that fixed. So, we, we work with homeowners in that respect. We also had nine appeals submitted, so sometimes, there's not enough initial information to waive it upfront. They always have that opportunity to do an official appeal through the city, and so, nine of those came through, and eight of those appeals were granted. I know the one that was not granted, I believe it was, person tried to file an appeal well after the deadline, it was like 90-plus days after the notice was sent to them. So, I hope that answered your question there. We, we've only billed, at this point, 153 total.
Okay. Actually, it does answer my, those two questions, and I got two more. So, the $15,000, give or take, that, well, let me skip that one. The $78,000 that you have taken in now for program revenue, is that roughly commensurate with program cost? Does it far exceed? Is it far less? Where are we at in the ballpark there?
Yeah, so, this is a challenge that we had to talk about, program costs, and what is the fiscal impact to the city for our response? And, you know, it's, it's always difficult to put a price tag on a police response to a call. Even when you're talking about the same type of call, there are a lot of different factors that can go into that response, in terms of the number of officers, the time they had to spend at a certain call. But, there was two, two ways that I looked at the cost. One, I think it was probably the easiest factor is, the City of University Place, we respond to calls for service in the unincorporated area of Pierce County down near Lakewood Drive, it's called the Manitow area, and 66th Street. There's a small pocket of unincorporated Pierce County there. Pierce County doesn't have any deputies anywhere, anywhere near this area, so they basically contract back with University Place for our deputies to respond down there and handle those calls. Every single call we go to, regardless if it's an alarm call, abandoned vehicle, whatever it is, the county pays the city $244 for that response. They calculated that out and figured that out some time ago as to what that cost, well, how they figure that cost is. So, we could certainly, you know, use that number for our own response to a call. The other factor, or other way I looked at it, is you just look at the operational cost of, of your police department and the total number of calls that we have. And you can say, well, based on the number of calls and the cost it does, it takes to run the, run this department, we're looking at a cost per call more towards $354. Those are the easiest math ways to determine those calls. There's some that would say, well, we just want to look at, what is the cost, the hourly wage of an officer, and then look at how long it takes to handle an alarm. Well, there's a lot of infrastructure costs that go into, we can't simply just say it's the cost, the hourly cost of an officer. The city pays for all the components of that officer, not just their hourly wage. So, we have training, we have equipment, we have 911 services that we're paying for that are involved in that dispatching and, and record-keeping of these calls. So, there's a lot of additional costs that factor in other than just their hourly wage.
Okay. So, then I guess my follow-up, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, so there's the cost, right? And so, if we looked at, on average, we had 400 false alarm calls previously. This year, we're doing really well. I think we're down, I would say, in that 283 range, right? So, we're doing a little bit ahead of the game in comparison to the previous years, but using that 400 number, and if we looked at the cost of simply, I'm sorry, I'm looking at these numbers specifically for you, on 244 calls, what was the cost on that? Sorry, I'm trying to find the specific number to get the math for you.
It's, the details, you know, aren't critical right this moment, but what I just say is, my follow-on comment will be is, as, obviously, in our consent agenda, we just approved the fee schedule for next year, that included the alarm fees. I think what I would like to see when you're doing your analysis this coming year, is an assessment is, is that structure right? A $40 fee plus $100 fine, or should we go to a $30 fee and a $200 fine? Or what would it is that would be more equitable, so that the people who are causing the costs are the ones more likely to pay the cost? Anyway, just take a look at it to see what would be fair and equitable, and to make sure our program costs for the fee actually, you know, they actually align for somewhat closely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Keel, followed by Councilmember McCloskey.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Chief. Thank you for your report again. I've got a number of questions. You first, and I, one, I didn't interrupt you, and I probably should have, because it may be gone now, but you gave out two numbers. There was a 458 number, and then compared to a number that was a 3 number. And I thought I heard you say that we got 458 calls, but only three of them were something. Can you, can you say that again, right?
Yeah. So, we had 458 alarm calls. That covers all types of alarms, whether it was a burglar alarm, a panic alarm, a robbery alarm, or... alarm, or even an alarm call that's what we call an other type. Even out of all 458 alarm calls, which covers all the different types, we only had three that generated a police report, meaning that we could verify, or some type of criminal activity associated with that alarm.
So, to me, that's real striking. I mean, and not in a good way, right? You know, where we've got all these calls, and we've got officers that are responding to things that, that didn't generate in a report. I would, you know, so I would think that those other calls, those other 555, were just false alarms, or something else that we've, that didn't generate anything that was good. So, to me, that, that's somewhat of an issue. And then, and then I started thinking about, you know, because I'm hearing from the community as well about these, all this stuff, is there an ordinance, you know, that outlines how police receive requests for service? For example, does it have to always be a phone call? Do you have to, you know, I mean, do, you know, is there, what is the standard way that generates a call for service from, from police?
Well, I mean, it, the call to police typically comes through 911, right? So, there's a, there's a dispatch call, is what we call a dispatch call, and then there's what we call an on-view call. So, the officer might be patrolling around, and they get flagged down by a citizen, or the officer sees it themselves, and it's considered an on-view call. A vast majority, 99% of these calls are come from an alarm company. And I think it's a good point that you raised, is talking about the difference between an alarm call and maybe a security check, or something else that is coming from an individual. So, if a neighbor sees something suspicious happening at their, at a neighbor's house, somebody prowling around, and then we get there and we don't find anything, that is not a false alarm call. That's a security check, it's a possible burglary in progress. What we focus on are alarm, specifically identified as alarm, and again, it's coming from an alarm company that is calling 911 on the behalf of an owner, who then dispatches an officer to that location.
Yeah. And see, so, what I'm driving at with that question is, it appears, and I, and just for the record, and so the public knows, I have an alarm system on my house, right? And I have all this stuff. So, and it just strikes me that having an alarm is an elected kind of a thing? It's not like, the only way that you can do it, or something that you have to do? It seems like it's a, it's almost like, it's an elected thing, right? And so, it's a convenience, you know? And so, I'm okay with paying for the convenience of having, something going on in my house, and I'm not there, or if I'm asleep, and, you know, something happens, that the alarm happens, and it already calls, it calls the police. And so, I don't have to do that. I mean, it's already done for me. So, to me, it's a convenience that we pay for, you know, as opposed to something else. So, I'm real comfortable with how this is set up, because of that. And then, to have some false alarms and stuff like that, I think it's, it makes sense to me to have something that, that we have to deal with, you know, if there's some, you know, false alarms going on with their, with that, some kind of a fee for that, if it's out of hand. And then, you guys have the ability to, to look at that and adjudicate that. So, the other question I have is, for most of these alarm systems, do they, are they all monitored, or, I mean, because I know with my system, if something happens, they call me, and they try to say, hey, is everything okay? And then, I gotta give them a code to let them know that everything is okay, to make sure I'm not under duress, you know? And if they don't get that, then they call the police, right? Or if they try to call me, and they can't reach me, then they call the police. But, there's something that's in the middle there, that, that actually almost makes it like a person's calling. Is that how most of this stuff is set up, or do these alarm, and it goes right to the, you know what I mean, it goes right to the call for service?
No, I think the way you described it is certainly probably 99% of the way alarm systems are set up. The alarm companies are notified when there's an activation, and they're trying to contact the homeowner to verify that it's an actual valid alarm, and to confirm whether or not they need the police response. And I would say even more so with technology nowadays, homeowners are getting notified even without an alarm company. They have an alert on their own phone, or they have an app that sets up, and everybody has a camera, and so, I would say that they have the ability to control that response a little bit more than maybe we did, you know, 10, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, when it was just solely relying on phone technology through a company.
Well, I mean, with that, Chief, that makes me even more comfortable of actually instituting these fees for false alarms, because if we've got that much control, you know, over what actually gets called in, and there's still false alarms, it just makes sense to me that we do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCloskey.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Chief.
Hello.
I have a couple, couple of questions here for you. I don't know if you know that, because you've been, you've been cleaning up the permitting, the outdated permits from the people that have moved out, or are no longer using their systems. But, maybe perchance, you know, if there's been any uptick in the amount of permits provided to our community, meaning that the, under the new system, has it discouraged anyone from getting a permit?
I couldn't say for sure whether or not it discouraged them. We have had a fair amount, so the way the process works is each month, we send out a notification via, you know, snail mail, out to those people to say, hey, you need to renew your alarm permit, and they're provided information on the new ordinance and the program. And we've had a fair amount that have called back in to say, I don't have an alarm anymore. Now, whether or not they're choosing, they don't necessarily say, it's because of this program, they don't have an alarm anymore. I think that there's a fair amount of people that have an alarm for three years, because that's the part of their contract with the alarm company provider, and after three years, they stop the monitoring service. But, that's been kind of the thing, we've had a fair amount that have canceled the permit, or said, I don't have it anymore, but not really said it's because of the program itself.
And, so, with the people that have, let's say, the Ring type of alarm system, you qualify that under the 911 call, right? Because it's probably generated through 911, like if somebody is not home, and they see an intruder at the front door, and they call it in, it would be considered a 911 call.
It would be considered a 911, but I wouldn't consider that an alarm call, because you have, you have a person, so the homeowner, maybe they're not present, but they have video and technically eyes on whatever the suspicious activity is. So, it would be more dispatched as a security check, or a burglary in progress, not an alarm, alarm call.
Okay. And then, also in the budget for the, for 2022, we have budgeted $40,400, and we have generated $78,799. Am I understanding that correctly? That we're way over budget on what we're accruing?
I'm not aware of the $40,000 number.
Okay, it was generated with the 1,956 permits?
Yeah, so, we have $78,000 that we've generated on permit revenue, and we've generated another almost $13,000, or 12, I think it was 12.5, in false alarm fees so far this year.
Okay.
That's what we've generated.
I just want to really understand the numbers, and maybe you and I can have a discussion on that, as to what the trend is, and to the actuals. Because if we're trending double what we're anticipating, then I would like to look at the adjustment of the initial fees. It appears, from one citizen that gave us a grid chart, that the fees were between $15 to $24 in outside jurisdiction. The City of Tacoma had an interesting model, where they didn't bill the resident, they billed, they billed the alarm company for it, and so, the resident pretty much paid zero. So, I thought that was an interesting model to look at. So, I would like to revisit our alarm permitting fees for that. I think for sure that our false alarm fees are in reason, especially in light of the actual cost. You know, $100 seems to be pretty reasonable in regards to, you know, the 350 whatever for a public service officer to come out to a false alarm. And, the other question I had was the $250 fee that's been going out in a few of our emails, and I had a discussion with one of our citizens. And I did find that figure on, I think, page 10 of our ordinance. And, I would like to have a little more explanation of that. I don't think it's in regards to the permitting, and the actual penalties, but this does, is underlying the penalties on that. For any person who violates any provision of this chapter, shall be deemed to have committed a civil infraction. You know, that's pretty heavy. We're not paying your alarm fee, or not getting permitted. The penalty for such a violation shall be a fine in the amount of $250, together with fees, costs, and assessments. Each day that any person violates this provision of this chapter, shall constitute a, you know, a separate offense. So, I need to have a better understanding of what all that means, or if, you know, it seems like this is a new addition to this ordinance. And, on the surface, to me, it looks pretty egregious. I think we really need to pull back, you know, the civil infraction, you know, sounds pretty heavy-handed for maybe not updating their, their permit and paying the city their So, do you know offhand how to explain this to me? This, this language in this document?
Yeah, I'll probably defer to Matt Kazer to talk a little bit about the language of the ordinance. What I can tell you is, that is not a component of our fee schedule. It's, we don't utilize that for not getting a permit, or failing to pay a false alarm fee. But, Matt might be able to elaborate more on what it could be used for.
Yeah, there, yeah, thanks, Chief. A general penalty provision is actually a common attribute of many of these municipal alarm provisions. I was trying to quickly pull the former version of the code prior to the amendments that council had made last year, but my recollection from the former version is that it actually provided for a hybrid penalty, both possibility of a civil infraction, together with a criminal penalty, which probably isn't the direction where you want to go. I was separately pulling up just one of our neighbor's municipal codes, the City of Furcrests, still continues to make it a misdemeanor offense for the fine not to exceed $1,000 for violations of their alarm code, with language going back to 1993. What we're really looking at, when you're putting in those provisions of code, isn't the, you know, you didn't pay your bill. The alarm code itself, when the council amended it, has a number of other related provisions, such as a registration requirement for like the alarm companies, making sure that we know that they're doing business, making sure that you're not maintaining a nuisance alarm, that the alarm continues to keep on going off, those sort of other things. What we're looking at, and the chief has kind of looked at it, or has alluded to it, is what problem are you trying to solve? The problem we're trying to solve is identifying who has alarms, providing a mechanism to responsibly allocate those costs. It's not that we're out there with a ticket book, ticketing folks with $250 a day fines. And to my knowledge, and I think the chief would confirm this, we haven't been out there with a ticket book, because the chief has told you, he's been active, him and his team, they've been actively working with residents, so if they're having the false alarms, we can work with them to get those systems maintained responsibly. That's what we're looking at. So, I hope that answers your question.
Okay. I think I will, will need to have a staff briefing on this, because it is in our ordinance 734, to go over some of the provisions in that, so I, so we can bring some clarity and some focus, because as I was reading through it, and in regards to the permitting aspect of it, I need to know how they all dovetail together. And when I'm reading this as a citizen, I'm thinking that this could be part of the permitting violations. I think there's some point of confusion out there with some of our citizens, in regards to actually what the, what the penalties and fees are, and how, if it's voluntary or involuntary. So, I would like to understand this particular ordinance, because it is sometimes, it is contradictory to the other permit alarm ordinance, or ordinance document that we do have on our, the front of our website, which is in accordance to what we have now with the $100 fine for false alarms. So, I would like, I think, a deeper discussion of this, so I can understand what's going on, and, you know, get the, get the lay of the land down, okay? So, that's all my comments for right now. Thank you.
All right. It sounds like this is an item that's going to move forward for possible, ongoing consideration. But, that's for the next mayor to figure out. Believe it or not, we are relatively on time with our original agenda. We're on our last study session item, the 27th Street Landing Legislative Amendment. I'll ask Mr. Swindell to come on camera, and in the meantime, thank council, and put a reminder in there, unless you want an extension, if you have any comments or questions after this presentation, please be brief. Yes, Mr. Swindell?
Hello. Can you see my screen with the staff report and the site plan?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have a study session on the 27th Street Landing Proposed Code Amendments. The applicants are in the audience, as well as one of the, at least one of the property owners, the property owner for the Bosnick Roofing property. And Bosnick Roofing, I'm going to point with my mouse, or this crosshair, this area has traditionally been the Bosnick Roofing properties, and the Gaylord properties are up here, so closer to 27th Street. The applicant is Venture Retail or Real Estate Group LLC. The property owners are Gaylord Family LLC, and Donald and Karen Bosnick. The project site is located at 27th and 67th Avenue, and involves 7.239 acres and 11 parcels, both in the mixed-use urban industrial 75 zone, and also a number of R1 or residential properties, abutting that to the east. All the R1 properties, is important to know that all of them are within the sale area, and the sale area is this entire group of parcels, and we call it the project site. And the project site is a term that is currently defined in our municipal code. So, the applicant is considering three different development scenarios for this project. The first, it's called Version 4, consists of two seven-story mixed-use The first, it's called Version Four, consists of two seven-story mixed-use commercial and residential buildings, and one seven-story standalone residential building over a single level of underground parking, with an additional two-story parking structure located east of and attached to the southern mixed-use, seven-story mixed-use building. The project would include nine-hundred-and-eighty-five residential units, and, whoops, let me get where I'm going here, page two, sixty-one-thousand-five-hundred square feet of retail space, nine-hundred-and-sixty parking spaces after the, which would be a reduction from the one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty parking spaces. This is a reduction which is permitted already by provisions within the code with what we call a minor amendment or a minor variance. Version Five is similar to Version Four, and I might add that the site plans of each of these versions are included at the back of your staff report as the exhibits. It eliminates the two-story parking structure and requires additional parking, and that would be more surface parking, totaling nine-hundred-and-ninety-five parking spaces. Again, it would be, it would be asking for a minor variance to reduce it from, by twenty-five percent, by the otherwise required one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twelve parking spaces. Version Seven is quite a bit different from Versions Four and Five. It is, consists of five four-story buildings, residential buildings, and one mixed-use residential retail building, which would be located adjacent to Twenty-seventh Street and provide the required retail frontage that is required by our form-based code. That development will provide three-hundred-and-seventy-three residential units, twelve-thousand square feet of retail space, and three-hundred-and-fifty-four surface parking spaces. In this proposal, there is no underground or parking structure proposed. In order to facilitate this proposed, or these proposed developments, the applicant is requesting for three amendments to the zoning code. The first amendment is to reduce the side and rear yard setbacks for buildings that abut the mixed-use urban industrial seventy-five zone, when abutting R-one and R-two from thirty feet to ten feet, when the-
David, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
All right.
But you're talking, you did a lot of stuff, but you're on the same slide, and I'm just wondering, do you have any pictures or anything that shows what you're talking about, these building sizes and parking? And is there anything that you can show us to see what that slide?
Let me get that up for you. Sure, this is the site. Okay, let's do this.
It's also in your, in the study packet towards the end, where the plan, but yeah, it'd be good to see it.
Okay, so this is Version Four. The three buildings, if this is the site here, you have the first floor in Versions Four and Five consists of this underground parking area. And then above that, at grade, you would have Building A, it would be a seven-story mixed-use building with the ground floor being commercial and retail, a middle building here with some amenities, and then Building C, also with a retail component on the back of that, as there is a road on the backside here. Surface parking would be completely on, in this area, on a mixed-use urban industrial seventy-five zone, whereas the surface parking here and here would be on adjacent R-one properties, which are part of the project site. All three of these buildings are completely on the mixed-use urban industrial seventy-five zone, and it's only the off-site parking in this area, which would be on R-one properties on the project site. Here, there is, you can see also a second level of, this is the attached parking structure, the additional parking structure, which is a part of Version Four. This is the lower level of that. Here's the second level of that attached parking garage. And then when we're above that second story, and then we're going into stories three through seven, they would be all residential. Again, these properties here, the three buildings would be still in the MU seventy-five, the seventy-five refers to the maximum height limit, and the surface parking, with the exception of this building here, would be in the R-one. The next version of Five is basically the same thing, but you don't have that second-story parking garage that you had out here to the east of Building B. So this would be basically floors two through seven, rather than three through seven in this configuration. The last version of the proposal, potentially, is called Version Seven. Excuse me, I might find that. Might be here, there we go. And this one is made up of the five four-story residential, multifamily residential buildings, and then this one mixed-use residential and retail building with the retail on the ground floor at Twenty-seventh Street, and the site would rely completely on surface parking. So I'm going back to that original map, and here we go. So I wanted to bring this map up to show you where the mixed-use zones are, where this allowed seventy-five feet, and they're here as well, and then where the abutting R-one parcels are, which are part of the project site. So again, coming back to the applicant's proposal-
Hey, David, I didn't interrupt you, I apologize. But when you use that, your picture is very small, and your pointer is barely observable. Is there any way to blow that picture up so we can see what you're pointing to, please?
Is that better?
It is, thank you.
Okay, so again, we have Twenty-seventh Street and Sixty-seventh Street. This is the old Haps Wrecking Yard, if you're familiar with that, and it's part of the Gaylord property. And the Gaylord properties included these two mixed-use seventy-five zones, and these abutting R-one properties were all belonged to the Gaylords, and they're under purchase option for purchase. These other parcels to the south of the Gaylord properties here are the site of the existing Bosnick Roofing Contractors Yard, and also includes this parcel here, which is a, is currently a fairly overgrown storm drain pond, and is considered wet. So I'm going to back off this again a little bit for a minute, and see if I can bring up the Okay, so, no, bring back the Bring it back up. So the, again, continuing on with the proposed amendment, I'm going to find my cursor here, get back on the screen. So we have, the proposed amendment is to reduce, the first one, the setbacks adjacent to the R-one parcels that are a portion of the project site, to reduce it from thirty to ten feet when the R-one properties that they abut are within the project site. And that's not the other residential uses or zone properties to the east. The second request is to allow, currently, there is a maximum height of forty-five feet for buildings that abut R-one and R-two zones. Again, similar to the first request for an amendment to reduce the setbacks when the R-one properties are a portion of the project site, to allow the buildings to be seventy-five feet when the R-one properties are, adjacent R-one properties are part of the project site. The third amendment is to allow accessory-use parking for uses that are allowed in the adjacent mixed-use seventy-five zone to be allowed to be put as an accessory use on the R-one properties, provided the R-one properties are part of the project site. And then, in order to facilitate that, we'd also be changing an accessory-use type of off-site accessory parking in the accessory-type chapter of the zoning code. So those are the three amendments that are being proposed, and I can bring back the site plan if you'd like. Oh, that's that one, that's our council meeting, and that one there. And we can
Okay.
If I can figure out how to split the page again.
In the meantime, we are going to be running out of time, and to allow plenty of opportunity for questions and comments from council, I would request a motion to extend our time till ten o'clock.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Keel, I move that we extend our time to ten.
Okay, do I have a second?
This is Councilmember Figueroa, I second.
Okay, are there any objections? Okay, not seeing any motion carries. Okay, go ahead.
Was supposed to
So I assume, I assume, Mr. Swindell, that you are open for council comments at this time?
That's correct. I have completed my presentation. I would say that the Planning Commission, I would add that the Planning Commission has reviewed the staff report, rather, has held a, two public meetings regarding this proposal, including a public hearing, and following the public hearing, they are recommending, unanimously recommending approval of the three amendments. They had, although they had concerns regarding some of the impacts associated with the size and scope of the developments, that would occur, mitigation and identification of those impacts would occur at the time the development was constructed, rather than at the time that the code is amended.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Keel, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, great, thank you, Mayor. So, David, thanks for your presentation. Of these three code amendments, which scenario or plan or, you know, configuration of what the applicant is proposing, which of the, of those do these three amendments support?
The first two, or the first one and the third one, wherein they're asking for a reduced setback from the R-one properties that are part of the project site, are necessary for all three proposals. The Version Seven proposal does not need the height amendment, because I believe their four-story can build within the forty-five feet.
Okay, so what about the, so the first and the third, all three need, so what about the second one? Who needs the second one?
The second amendment is the amendment to allow buildings to, within the MU UI seventy-five zone, to be built to the full seventy-five feet, as the zone implies, provided, you know, they abut. Currently, they would only be allowed to go to forty-five if they were abuting an R-one or R-two zone parcel. However, because these parcels are part of their project site, they're asking for the extra height.
So, so the Second Amendment supports the proposal that the applicant wants that builds the seven-story buildings?
That's correct, Version Four and Version Five.
Okay, all right. So how many, how many units are we talking about on this?
Well, under both the Version Four and Five scenarios, we are talking about nine-hundred-and-eighty-five residential units, and under the Version Seven, we're talking about three-hundred-and-seventy-three units.
Yeah. Well, I tell you, nine-hundred units is eye-popping to me, just to, just to put it out there. I mean, it's like, what, you know, in that, in that area? And, you know, three-hundred is a big number, you know, I think about three-hundred, and I think about what we have in the town center, there's only two, there's only two-hundred there, and that's a big number, to add another over a hundred in that area. And not to mention, you know, adding another, you know, seven-hundred in that area, in another area, in one area, it's like, anyway, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very much keenly interested in the conversation with the applicant about the number and the layout of their offer. I'm all for it. I think we need to have the development, I mean, we're definitely into the development. I'm just hopeful that we can have a conversation about what we might think as a council is appropriate, and what they, they believe that that will pencil. So I think there's that conversation.
Well, I do believe the applicant is in attendance. However, I know that the city council during their study sessions typically do not take public comment, but that is up to the council.
No, this, we're considering amendment changes, not, not the project changes, so it's the verbiage that we're addressing in the study session.
Correct.
Okay, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Councilmember Figueroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Just comments mostly, and that is, I'm glad that, that this changes are before us. this changes are before us, we went into approving a designation, accepting a designation from the Pitches Sound Regional Council to allow for growth in our city within Pierce County. And with that came, because it would allow us to to have a a hands up with grants and monies that comes from the state, and so we accepted that. We have been scratching our heads about how to house that population. And we even went through a sub-area planning endeavor that lasted, I think, two and a half years. So we knew during that process, even when we said yes to the sub-area plans, that nothing was perfect, it's so hard to come up with all the variables that could go into a development, especially the ones that we're talking about, commercial apartments. And at a scale, this, you know, we need scales that are that allows for this type of housing, and that's why we allowed the the seventy-five feet and and other ways. Otherwise, we we would never achieve what we want doing fifty or a hundred here and there. So I'd like to see us move forward with this and allow for this amendments. I'm glad that the Planning Commission unanimously considered this. I think it's, it it shows that, that the that all the planning that goes on is never perfect, and when a real project comes on board, there is feedback as to what our policies are and we're able to. I'm glad that we're able, there are changes that can be swallowed. I do agree with Councilmember Keel that that nine hundred seems to be such a big amount. So not that we're, I I would like to see this amendments move forward for us to approve it on the next council meeting, but I think that as as this project moves forward with 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 staff, that that special attention is given as to how, you know, the amount of apartments can be built and what mitigations can occur for for all the things that go with that many apartments, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know the hour is late and I I think this is a project that I would ask the council not to rush to decision, but certainly, maybe we can have a second study session after we get get all of our questions answered. You know, Dave, I just have a few questions here real quick, and I want to just keep it moving. When you're asking for a ten-foot setback, I I can tell you from past experiences in the city, when we reduced the buffer from thirty feet to ten feet, the buffers were negligible and disastrous. But I'm looking on on there on Sixty-seventh Street where we have all those single-family homes, and we're gonna put a seventy-five-foot structure directly behind those. So, you know, for the council members who have their homes, picture a city hall directly in their backyard, and I'm trying to get my head around on this buffer. Is that on the west side of those R1 zones that are owned by the developers? Or is it on the east side of that R1 zone? That's my first question.
Okay, the, all the buildings would be, and I wish I had a better pointer here. It's not coming out too well, maybe I can use a hand tool, okay. So the, all those seventy-five-foot buildings would be on this parcel and this parcel and this parcel. The buffer, if you would, from the seventy-five-foot height would be the complete width of all these R1 properties that are also part of the project site. So the seventy-five foot is not being built on any of these parcels. And these parcels here are already in the MU zone. And then, so, and I believe the building would come down here and you would get the bulk of these properties in parking, surface parking, between the actual seventy-five-foot buildings and the adjacent existing single-family residences.
So so the ten-foot buffer would really be on the back fence of those homes, is that correct?
The ten-foot buffer would be, the ten-foot setback would be right here.
No.
Okay.
Okay, and then the parking, the parking lot would be right against those fences?
Yeah, surface parking in these, on these lots. And then there would be required landscaping within these areas and a perimeter buffering requirement from the, between the R1 properties and on the project site and and between that and the off-site R1 zones.
Define perimeter buffing for buffering for me, would you please?
When it abuts a a street like this, actually, there's no parking within the first twenty feet or twenty-five feet, it's within the front yard setback. And then it would be only about a five-foot buffer here, landscape buffer. But then I'm going to jump off to a beautiful website. Uh-oh, that's the the wrong browser, but I think I can still get where we need to go. Maybe not, okay, I'm gonna use a different browser. Hey, look at how that comes up every time, right off the top. Okay, so here we come down to our municipal code. And we go to code publishing. And we go to Title Nineteen. And we go to off-street parking. And sorry, apologize for this. Might be landscaping. I believe it would be an L3 buffer, which is a twenty-foot wide buffer, or L1 buffer, a visual screen. Max minimum of two rows staggered evergreen trees along with ground cover and shrubs.
Okay, similar to the condo development along Sixty-seventh down by Fortieth or Forty-fourth. Is that about right?
I I think so, I'll have to look.
All right. You know, I I applaud the development to the comments that were made earlier about, you know, economic development, growth, accommodating growth and all of that stuff. I I I think this is a a good site and it's a good project. The the concern I have is, again, I I keep picturing South Hill evolving down here on Sixty-seventh. We just approved a massive development right across the street there. If we go with nine hundred and eighty-five units, that's just shy of two thousand cars being dumped onto Twenty-seventh Street and Sixty-seventh, in addition to the other vehicles that are, that were also dumping onto the same streets, and zero improvements. That concerns me gravely, not lightly or bigly, it's just, it's gravely, because that starts to really congest that area without any kind of road improvements. I had talked to our city engineer on the last project, who promised to give the the city council a briefing on what those road improvements were gonna be to accommodate that development. We haven't seen that yet, so still waiting to hear from that. I I just think that nine hundred and eighty-five units is staggering. I I don't know if the council can get their head around that, for that tight of a area, for that tight of a of a roadway system that we have there, I certainly like the the rest of it. I love the the combination of retail and residential, as you all know, I've been a big fan of that one. And and we're looking at multiple versions, so we're approving or are being asked to approve amendments on multiple versions, and we don't even know what the final version looks like for this project. So I'd like to learn more about it before I jump into wrapping my arms completely around it. But I think the project certainly is moving in the right direction and certainly is is a is a good location for where it wants to go, we just don't have enough information to be asked to make decisions on that at the time. So that's my comment for the moment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'd like to look at these three proposals, kind of work backwards from from, in my mind, easiest to hardest. The third one, I actually have no issues with, I think that that particular one makes sense. The second one, as many have pointed out already, the nine hundred and eighty-five units is a lot of units. At the same time, I am, think I'm in favor right now of this amendment because the alternative is, if we want to get that same amount of housing, we're using three times the surface area of our land to get that kind of capacity. But having said that, if we were to actually try and put nine hundred and eighty-five units there, I would really want a good study of all of the impacts that everybody's already brought up, because that is very concerning, I live near there. So finally, though, one, I I'd like to talk about the first one briefly, and because it talks about using R1 sites for parking within the project plan, and we've been presented a plan here. But what I would like to know or have some assurance is that those planned dimensions won't change and still have the same provision. And to clarify what I'm talking about, if, for example, one of those homeowners along Sixty-seventh, say that larger plot right next to the, you know, about halfway down, decides to sell to the project, and all of a sudden the project site increases, would that site all of a sudden become R1 zone parking? Because that kind of changes the context of what we're talking about here. I'd just like some assurance that if we approve this amendment, it's for this particular plan and not for a change site plan later on, does that make sense?
That does make perfectly good sense, and because of the wording of the proposed amendment, if, for example, this parcel that I have the hand on right there were to be purchased by the developer and became a part of the project site, it would, the First Amendment would apply as well, it could be used for on-street parking. As I pointed out, they've already got another one that extends to Sixty-seventh. They'll be using this as an access point. But currently, in the R1 zone, parking is is not permitted in the first twenty-five feet unless it's it's on a driveway. So that could apply here, where there might be a larger setback before the parking began. But then the parking would, as you say, would, you know, would be abutting as as it would here. It would abut a single-family residence, however, there would be a landscape buffer adjacent to it.
Okay, so, just to clarify my point there then, I'm not terribly comfortable with that, the site plan being able to change. I'd like to approve these amendments towards this particular dimension, rather than having it leave flexible, because otherwise, things could change in a way that we're not prepared for.
I understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what I'm seeing here with the proposed variance amendments is that the height restrictions in all of these areas, except for R1, is at that height. And they are going, hopefully, with our form-based code and design standards in in university place, that'll make the building interesting. So the main concern for me is protection of the the existing R1 homes that are in here with the the buffer. And Mr. Swindell had indicated that it will be a, what, a forty-five-feet buffer?
Let me go back, yeah, let me go back to the zoning code real quick.
Okay, well, before you do that, David, all I want to know is along the, where the homes are, even if it's parking, there's gonna be a buffer and a fence so that headlights don't go into those residential property owners. And from my understanding, that's what's going going forward.
Okay, what we've got here, and I'm going to show you this table that's a part of our landscape requirements. So here are existing units along the top, are you able to see that all right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have existing uses, single-family here. And then these are the proposed uses down here. So we've got multifamily, L1 is the level-one landscaping is the requirement between multifamily housing use, which is this, would be accessory parking too, or a mixed use, both require the L1 landscape level. And going back to that L1, again, this is our heaviest landscaping requirement. It's twenty feet wide, no less than twenty feet. And it consists of two rows of evergreen trees staggered as well as, you know, areas that are not planted with the trees and shrubs. It need to be planted with ground cover. So this is our most stringent exterior landscaping. And then what I'm going to show back here is so that here, where you have the R1 park zone, which would be used for parking, accessory to the mixed-use zone, a twenty-foot buffer would be required along here. That L1 buffer would be required along here. Likewise, any parking that's located on this between the between the multifamily or mixed-use zone requires a twenty-foot landscape buffer, sight-screening buffer along here. There isn't currently a requirement for a wall or fence, per se, but we usually, we typically get a fence as part of the design standard review, or it's typical that we do, developers would just elect for having a fence for security if no other reason.
Okay, and and there would, will be an environmental impact study of this site?
There'll be a, yes, there'll be a CEPA review. It's very likely that there'll be a, what we call a mitigated determination of nonsignificance, rather than a full-blown environmental impact statement. If we can mitigate the impacts associated with the site, one of the things that has been brought up is is traffic, it's a great concern of ours. This site would be subject to a traffic impact analysis. And that would be, you know, reviewed by our engineering department. And they would determine based on that what type of mitigation, traffic mitigation, might be required in order to accommodate this project and maintain our adopted level of service for transportation. Likewise, you know, any other environmental impacts associated with this, there would be a substantial traffic impact fee, as you can imagine. There would be a substantial park impact fee generated by nearly a thousand units.
Okay, well, well, thank you. I satisfied all my questions, thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have final comments on this. I know twenty-five years ago, when we incorporated and we looked at the zoning on this, Planning Commission at that time did did determine that the residential in this particular section of the city would more than likely go to industrial or commercial use, given what was surrounding there. However, I'm the fact that we've got zoning changes being, or verbiage changes being requested to existing the fact that we've got zoning changes being, or verbiage changes being requested to existing code in the R-one zone instead of a re-zone request for those parcels, it has me a bit concerned, particularly given that we set up an island in the northwest or the northeast corner of this property that's all R-one and, and housing. But we'd have no assurance with the, with these zoning amendments that are being requested by the developer that's, that they won't come in and buy those as, as valuable pieces to add to their, to their project, particularly if there's some issue with whatever comes up with all the various studies, the environmental, et cetera. And then we end up with massive parking lots, uh, facing Sixty-seventh here. So, I do have some concerns about that. Um, because part of what we were trying to get away with all these years with our zoning is op- you know, open parking lots being there. And the rest of the houses to the south of that project, um, are more than likely, um, currently rentals anyway, and the people are looking to, to capitalize on potential commercial property. So, there's a potential of this crawl moving further south. So, I do have some concerns with, with zoning. I don't wanna preclude any development from happening, happening at the site. I think we need to have a more concerted effort regarding the, the proposed plan and, and talk about the impacts. I don't believe that the Planning Commission looked at it from the standpoint of the impact that it will have for that area with all the traffic potential that's there. Um, the constraints that the road system has in that particular area. And I, I see one of the proponents for this project has his hand raised. However, we do not take public comment at, at this time, um, during our study session. We may consider it for a future study session, but not for tonight's session. I do think this needs to be, be discussed in more detail and maybe, uh, have more than a half hour or an hour reported, you know, allotted to it because there's just, there's too many unknowns at this point and too many repercussions that, that can happen for this. And I understand that there, once this project's underway, the, the proponents are gonna potentially come to us for wanting some further incentives and et cetera on the project. And so
Is there anything in particular you would like staff to provide? Um, I, I hope that you understand, uh, what is being requested, um, as far as amendments are concerned.
It's not limited strictly to this exact site plan.
Yeah, so you'd like to have some assurances that the site plan or the boundaries of the site plan are not going to change or to extend to Sixty-seventh. I'll have to talk to Mr. Kizer about how we might be able to structure that, uh, through possibly a development agreement, uh, once the, um, the amendments are, are made or even before then. Um, in order for a, uh, development agreement, for example, to be eligible for that tool, uh, the code, the development has to meet the code in the first place. So, um, we'll look at that. Um, other than that, um, there's, um, we may have to, uh, work on the wording of the proposed amendments in order to assure that it, it doesn't extend to Sixty-seventh, uh, with, with parking adjacent to Sixty-seventh without, um, some other intervening use.
No. I mean, I thi- I think those, those residential houses in the northeast corner and along Sixty-seventh, it will turn into commercial. I don't, I don't, I foresee that happening, but, but the, but I don't want it to turn into being a parking lot. If there's more parking needs or what have you, I would like to, uh, be assured that it remains R-one till a viable project comes and then we look at the zoning, um, change as it, as it comes. Um, we have, we have eight more minutes. Um, Councilmember Figaro, do you have a brief comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanna support what she just said, uh, which goes along with, uh, Councilmember Woods', uh, comments, and that is, uh, that whatever we do in accepting this amendments for this R-ones, that, uh, they don't by default, uh, go to any other R-ones that may be bought by the developer for the, for this project. And I think that that would answer, uh, the mayor's concern about any more parking than what we are saying, okay, we, we'll agree with this, but we're not agreeing to massive other parking lots. And, uh, it also matches with, uh, Councilmember Woods. And I, and I like those thoughts and I appreciate them and I, I would support that.
Um, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too appreciate your comments. I agree with them. I would request that we hold this over for another study session and allow council an opportunity just to dig a little deeper into this project. And if we have additional questions in advance, maybe send those over to David or Matt or both, uh, to take a look at and then come back and have a conversation on that so we can keep, at least keep the project moving in some direction.
Yes, I, I agree. I think, I think this warrants more than just one night study session before we take action on it, given the, the immensity of the project. Okay, any other comments or questions? We have, yes, Councilmember Figaroa.
Just one last, thank you, Mayor. One last thing is, uh, I think because of the, this is a big deal for our city, uh, the amount of apartments, whether it be the three hundred, uh, plus or the nine hundred, doesn't matter. Uh, both are significant changes on our landscape. Uh, I think that it might, uh, I would like to request, uh, that when it comes back, that we provide, uh, for the developer to be able to answer some questions, uh, at that time for that particular study session.
Yeah, I, I
Thank you.
I concur with that. I think it, moving, moving it forward. It allows us also time to work with staff and get a bit, better clarity on the ordinance changes or the code changes that are being requested so that we can understand the pros and cons for those changes. So, when we talk with the developer about the reasoning for the request, we can be on point. Because I don't think it matters whether it's the nine-hundred unit apartments or the four standalone buildings, that the change is still going to be, has the potential be, to be significant, so. Okay, any other comments? Not hearing any, I will consider this the end, our last meeting for the year 2021. I wanna thank council. Um, I apologize that we were over, but not quite as late as I had predicted in my own head, um, despite our, our glitch this evening. Um, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, and we will see you next year. January third is our next meeting. So, in the meantime, have a safe and happy holiday.
Nice job being mayor, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Second to motion.
All right. Good night, everybody.